We'd like to welcome you all out tonight to our September 15th commission meeting. We ask that you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, just so you know, Commissioner Hopes is joining us virtually tonight. He's quarantined at the moment, so if you hear strange voices, it's just Commissioner The first item on the agenda is the recognition of retirement of Annette Sandoval. Turn that over to Rose Barnes.
Can you have the sheriff come up with me? So, Annette Sandoval retired this month, and she's been here actually 19 years. She started in July of 2002. She was promoted to the head cook in 2016, and she does a lot of hard work over there, and I'm going to let the sheriff talk a little bit. She wasn't able to make it tonight. She had a dentist appointment at work, so.
You know, Annette was kind of thrust into the position of supervisor over there, and she took it in stride. She actually made a lot of improvements in the way that we do things in the jail with the caloric intake and the diet and everything that the inmates get. She was a huge asset to us, and we're really going to miss her a lot, but we want to welcome her to retirement. She's well-deserved it.
I'll give you that. Thank you.
Well, even though she's not here, we do want to thank her and wish her well in her retirement and thank her for what she's done for the county. We'll move on to item number two, the Super Service Award from Tina Henry.
Rita's.
Rita's. Can you handle that and place it Tina?
So, yes, Tina is not here today, and so I'm filling in and going to see if I can figure out all this that she does. So, the Super Service Award is something that, I'm not sure if it was Tina and others, but Tina's been overseeing it for the last few years, and she sends a nomination form out to the hospitality committee and asks them for nominations for a Super Service Award recipient. And every month, and then we highlight them at commission meeting to, you know, kind of highlight the work that they're doing, the service that they're providing to both residents and visitors of the area, and showing our appreciation for what they do and giving them a little bit of time to say thank you. And if they want to talk about their business, most are a little shy, but. So, we had a couple of nominations. I wanted to mention the other two that were nominated. Steve Nelson with Gateway Lanes and Helper Vibes team were both nominated, but the Nine Mile Ranch received the most nominations, so they're the recipient of our September Super Service Award. So I was just going to go through a couple of the nominations that were submitted for the Nine Mile Ranch. They, the first one is that they're an excellent host. They accommodated so many people this past weekend. They hosted the stewardship day in Nine Mile, which is an event where they bring archaeologists out and teach the public about, about the canyon and how to preserve and be good stewards of that, those invaluable natural resources. So, they offer visitors to the canyon a great experience with Ben's knowledge of the prehistory and history of Nine Mile Canyon. They provide a great venue, and the other one was, another feedback was, they provide a great venue for the general public. They offer authentic experiences of rural ranch life and Nine Mile Canyon. So, the recipient, because both, because it was the Nine Mile Ranch and the entire family, both Carla and Ben were specifically mentioned. We are presenting it to the Mead family who owned the Nine Mile Ranch. So, if we could have them come up?
Yeah.
Okay. No worries. So, we're presenting you with your award here and a certificate to go out to dinner.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. If you have anything to say.
I appreciate this very much. Let's work really hard for this and do this every year, so this has been awesome to see that our hard work really pays off. So, and like to try and be in the Carbon County business and working as our locals with everybody. So, I thank all of our locals and for all the businesses they gave us and the coalition, the Nine Mile Canyon Coalition, and I'm on the board member with them, so I enjoyed working with them. So, I just want to say thank you and everything for all the businesses and stuff, so we enjoyed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your family.
We'll move on to item number three, which is approval of minutes.
I don't have any corrections.
I don't have any corrections either. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number four is consideration and possible approval of board members to the Carbon County Housing Authority. I believe we received one application. Any comments or questions?
No comments. I think Dixie Marvadakis has turned an application in and would like to help serve there, and we're short, so I'd make the motion that we approve this applicant, Dixie Marvadakis, to serve on the Carbon County Housing Authority Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Welcome to the board, Dixie. Item number five is review and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Carbon County Office of Tourism and the Office of Tourism for the, for the Utah Cooperative Marketing Program and Traditional Funding. Rita, were you going to speak to this? Or would you like to have Tina?
I forgot that she has one too. Okay, it's great. I just have to stop working, so I was waiting for my first hearing, but why do you keep working here? Sorry. Okay, what was the first one?
The first one is for traditional and/or Forever Mighty for the Utah Cooperative Marketing Program. This is, this one's the detailed marketing grant budget. It has the Carbon Corridor, traditional application. It's got the social media, KSL, all that.
So, the Utah Office of Tourism offers a co-op grant that DMOs, Destination Marketing Organizations, which the Carbon County Office of Tourism is a DMO, they can apply to get matching funding for certain marketing campaigns that they intend on doing in the next fiscal year. And so, we've submitted the last couple of years to see if we can get monies that we're going to spend on our marketing matched by the Utah Office of Tourism, basically just taking advantage of basically doubling our money on this one. So this will cover our marketing for the year, and as you mentioned, it would cover the Carbon Corridor. Maybe I do need those lists.
Yeah, the social media.
Yeah, social media.
The KSL Native with Love Communications, utah.com, Placement, and Lead Generation. ETV Channel 6 commercial ads, Morris Murdoch Travel, an adventure show, short destination video and photo assets.
Yeah, so, and, so we, we highlighted projects that we wanted to do this next year that fit into the scope that the Utah Office of Tourism requires, and we were awarded. And not everybody was awarded because funding was lower than it has been, so we were fortunate enough to, to receive funding on that one. So, this is just an agreement that basically says that we'll, we'll do what we are outlining in there. We'll pay half. Utah Office of Tourism will be, will pay half.
And we undertake our money, our portion comes from the tourism tax dollars that are collected.
Yes.
Locally here.
Yes. Yes, which it falls within an allowable expense for both TRT and TRCC.
Okay.
And TRT is transit room tax. The TRCC is the restaurant tax.
Okay. Yeah, and I printed out those reports that we received on those from the TRT, and it looks like, obviously compared to last year, which was a COVID year, we didn't have as much travel, but we still brought in about $273,000. It looks like just off of the numbers this year so far in the eight months that if you take the average and add those other four months on, that haven't happened yet, obviously, takes us to about 336,000, which is quite a bit more than it's been for several years. Same with the restaurant tax. Actually, last year was better than the previous year. 2020 was better than 2019. And again, if you take that same out, projections, it looks like we're going to be about $52,000 ahead of even last year's high. So, the tourism is starting to hit here. I think we're all starting to feel that, and people are wanting to get out and about, and people are finding that Carbon County is a destination, so it's reflecting. So I think these are good things to have.
Yes, thank you for sharing those. And that's, we, essentially what we're trying to do is market to outsiders to come and visit, stay in our hotels, eat in our restaurants, so that those businesses can thrive, and it provides more, or taxes to continue marketing and funding our department, so.
Right. So there's three of them.
So, yes, there's, there's three.
Do these one at a time, so Commissioner Hopes, if you have any comments?
I don't. I, I'm appreciative of all the work, and I think we're headed in a good direction. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Carbon County and the Office of Tourism, Tourism Office of, Utah Tourism Office for the Cooperative Marketing Program, Traditional Funding.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is review and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Carbon County Office of Tourism and the Utah Office of Tourism for the Utah Cooperative Marketing Program, Forever Mighty Funding of the SPX Festival.
So, the, the previous one is one that they've done every year for a few years. The Forever Mighty is a, a new program that the Utah Office of Tourism came up with, and they had very limited funding for that campaign. I believe it was 200,000 is all they allotted for the entire state to fund for a Forever Mighty campaign. So, basically, what the Forever Mighty campaign surrounded was educating visitors about stewardship, good stewardship, preservation, you know, being good stewards of your natural resources and areas, and also highlighting businesses in your area. And so basically, it's to help the undiscovered parts of the state get a little bit of money to fund projects that highlight the undiscovered and follow those other guidelines. So they had certain criteria that you had to meet in your plan. So this one with the SPX Festival, what we did was, the Nine Mile Ranch and the Nine Mile Coalition hold a stewardship day every year in Nine Mile Canyon, and it's a great message, like I mentioned before, being respectful of the rock art and preserving the natural resources that we want to save for generations to come. And so, Tim Riley from the museum actually suggested that we, we had this other idea, and he says, why don't we just team up with the, with the Nine Mile Coalition and, you know, bump up their event and just kind of add on to it? And so what we did was, SB, excuse me, SPX stands for stewardship, preservation, and exploration, and there's a certain message around it about being good stewards, preserving the environment and those natural resources while out exploring the undiscovered parts of Utah. And so, for that, we highlighted or suggested to people to visit Helper for a history day, and they did a tour of Helper, a tour of Kenilworth, and talked about the past there. And they went to the Clampers Club, did a presentation on Matt Warner and Butch Cassidy, and then they did a night sky, a night sky event up at the cemetery because they are a dark sky community. Saturday was just basically go out to Nine Mile, take advantage of the Nine Mile Coalition's stewardship day, visit Nine Mile Ranch and go into each of the sites. And then the third day would be to go out to the quarry and visit the, or start at the prehistoric museum and then go out to the quarry and, you know, visit dinosaurs. So we kind of went back in time, you know, from the most recent history back to the dinosaurs was kind of what we envisioned. Anyway, so we presented, doing that event again next year, presented it to the state of Utah, and they loved the idea. They loved the messaging, and that one was awarded immediately. And they, again, there was not very many that were awarded, so that one was awarded. So that's what this one's for.
That's great.
No questions. I will make the motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Carbon County Office of Tourism and the Utah Office of Tourism for the Utah Cooperative Marketing Program, Forever Mighty Funding of the SPX Festival.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're not done yet.
I know.
Item number seven is review and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Carbon County Office of Tourism and the Utah Office of Tourism for the Utah Cooperative Marketing Program, Forever Mighty Funding of Cliffs and Canyons Loop.
So, this application we submitted initially was not awarded. We, a few of the DMOs, local DMOs, reached out to the Utah Office of Tourism and kind of said, hey, like, why wasn't this, can you like help us understand why this wasn't awarded? And that's when they let us know that there was limited funding, but they saw the, from that response, they went out and were able to find some extra funding and were able to fund this project. And what this project is, is really one of the first regional projects that we have started to work on with Emery County. And basically, what we're, what we're going to create is what we have called Cliff to Canyons Loop. I don't know if that will be the final name. We're going to go through a process to, to make sure that that's what we want to do, but basically, what we're telling visitors is, there's a loop from Price out to, you know, Castle Dale, the Moore Cut Off, down I-70 to Green River and back to Price is essentially like a circle. And highlighting everything that's off of that circle in both of our counties and saying, according to the Forever Mighty campaign, this is all undiscovered, and we're going to take a lot of the guidance from SPX, the preservation and, you know, recreate responsibly, pack-in, pack-out kind of messaging around that, but highlighting and helping people to understand the path they can take around here and, and everything that's off of there. So we're going to create this kind of, its own little identity around this loop, and both of us will market it, and it will serve as its own kind of thing, I guess. And Emery County actually contributed part of the monetary match, and we provided half, and then the state actually would provide the rest. The, I forgot to mention earlier that the Forever Mighty was a two-to-one match, so for every dollar that we provide, the Utah Office of Tourism would provide $2. So, if that kind of gives you an idea of the fact that we had, the Forever Mighty applications were limited, and they found, you know, some, a little bit of extra funding, and we were able to get both of our applications awarded, we were pretty excited about that.
Very good. Any questions?
No comments or questions.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't have any either.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between, oh wait, the memorandum of understanding between Carbon County and the Utah Office of Tourism for the Utah Cooperative Marketing Program, Forever Mighty Funding of Cliffs to Canyons Loop.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Okay, item number nine is a public hearing. Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Consideration and possible approval of the 2021 interlocal agreement between Carbon County and Price City for Carbon County to conduct building inspections within Price City limits from October 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2022. We'd like to have.
Todd, why don't you come up and tell everybody what we're doing?
So recently, Price City's building inspector quit, and so the city reached out to the county in order to help with the building inspections. So we have an interlocal agreement already with Schofield, Helper, Wellington, and East Carbon to conduct their building inspections. So this would just be the same as the other cities. We would do their inspections within Price City. We would handle all the scheduling, all the plan reviews, receiving the payments for all those building inspections. We think that would be, provide a consistent level of service to all the communities in the, in the county, so there's consistency with all the building requirements. So, they reached out to us for that, and we met with them and went over a kind of game plan of how to, how to make it work and the workload, and so we're able to provide that service for them.
Okay, great.
As you say, I think, I think it's a helpful thing for the city as well as the community at large. It'll make it a little bit more consistent regardless of whether you're in the cities or in the county when you need building permit help.
Yeah, and I think the partnership too, between the county and the cities have been really good. You know, your advice and help with the planning and zoning boards as well has been pretty instrumental, so I think this is a good fit. Was this agreement one that we had drafted, or?
Yes. So it's the same agreement we use with all the other cities, so we just added Price's information on to it, and it's the same agreement for, for everybody.
Okay, there's just one correction I saw on term one, or item one terms. The last sentence there just says that the request of termination said contract in right, I think it should be writing, 60 days. So, but other than that, I have no, oh, the other thing, it says that there is an annual report that would be generated from the county that would go back to the cities. That would be something your department would.
Yep.
Generate and share with.
Yes. So Doris keeps track of all the building permits, and then we, we send them monthly, and then a total annual permit report to all the cities also, so they have a whole year review of everything, put together of all the permits that we can pile at the end of each year and give them a year-to-date look at everything.
Great.
Might mention that the number of building permits are increasing as time goes on. There's just more activity now in the, in the county.
Yeah. So each year, we thought last year, the beginning of COVID, that it would start dipping down. It didn't. And then we thought, beginning of this year in the spring, when lumber prices increased, that we'd see a decrease in the number of building permits issued. And we've done more this year than we did last year, so it keeps, it's, just keeps going, so, which is great, which fully funds the building department so that no tax dollars are used to fund the, the building department. So all the permit fees that are generated pay for Ryan and Doris's salary and benefits and all their budget.
Great, great. Did you have anything, Casey?
I don't have anything, thanks.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2021 interlocal agreement between Carbon County and Price City for Carbon County to conduct building inspections within Price City limits from October 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll get to number nine. Public hearing, public hearing for open, for opening and amending the 2021 budget.
I'll make the motion that we open for a public hearing to amend the 2021 budget.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sorry, I seconded it, but I was muted, sorry. I'll second that.
All right. We are in public hearing. Seth, did you, did you want to start us off here?
Yeah, I can chat for a minute on this item. Each year, we, we end up amending our budget. That's pretty standard. Each year, we do it at least once, if not twice is more, more common. The reason behind that is each year, we generally will receive additional funding, especially in the form of grants, like some that Rita has mentioned here, and so we have to add those to our budget. We also generally have expenditures that we didn't budget for at the beginning of the year, whether it was because we didn't know the, the entire scope of the project, or they were just unforeseen expenses. So I, as part of this, state code requires that we have the budget amendments available in our office for 10 days prior to the public hearing, so these amendments have been in our office, and we are also required to advertise for two weeks in the local paper. The amendment process is taking place, so I'm going to, if it's all right with you, review these, these amendments that we're proposing tonight. I won't probably hit every item, but I'll, I'll review them by fund and give you some totals here. So, Fund 10, our general fund, the increase in our budget is large, and that's mostly due to the ARP funding that we received so far this year.
Explain what that is, maybe.
That sounds good. So the total amount increase that we'll see in Fund 10, or that we're proposing tonight is $2.71 million. $2 million of that is ARP funds that we received from the state, and that's the American Rescue Plan Act. I think most people are fairly aware of what that is, but it was meant to address issues related to COVID and also to help, they've, they've given us guidance that those dollars can also be used for some of our infrastructure improvements. So, we were awarded $4 million, or given $4 million is probably more appropriate from the state, from the federal government. This year, we received $2 million of that, and then next year, we'll receive the other $2 million. So, that's a lot of what's in our general fund budget increase. There's a few others that I can mention real quick. We also have plans to, to purchase a new ambulance. Each year, we, we end up needing a new ambulance just because of the number of miles that we put on them. The total amount was not budgeted for in our original budget because we knew we were going to be able to use some of our CARES Act money to cover that. So now that we are, have a clearer picture of what that looks like, there's an increase of $120,000. That's for half of what an ambulance costs in our, in our Fund 10. That makes up part of that $2.7 million that I mentioned. There's also $150,000, or I'm sorry, $180,000, which is an increase to ambulance employee wages and benefits. And that's all covered by a grant, the Rural EMS Grant that we awarded this year. This is a grant that we received last year. We received it last year in the amount of $60,000, but this year... We received it last year in the amount of $60,000, but this year, they significantly increased it for us. So that's something that wasn't prior, wasn't in our original budget, but we've made that change in these amendments. One of the other changes is that we're doing a jail re-roof this year. That was our main capital project for this year. We had budgeted $250,000 for that project. When we got into it, there was a suggestion by the contractor that we replaced the HVAC or I guess maybe a clearer picture is, as they got into it, one of our HVAC units needed replaced, and it was suggested that we replace all of them at the same time because they were the same age and they were likely to need replacing also. So there's $100,000 that's being moved from our Fund 10, general fund, to our Fund 45, which is our capital projects. One last thing I'll mention about Fund 10 that makes up that $2.7 million is there's $35,000 that's going over to Fund 25, which is our senior center nutrition program, and that's also, as a result of COVID, we've had more and more mobile meals that we've done to seniors that are at home. And so that's $35,000 is an increase from just supplies and food, as well as gas, to deliver those meals. So those, that's the main changes for Fund 10. And also Fund 25, I won't revisit that. In Fund 20, our municipal services fund, we're proposing an increase of $48,000. We have $20,000 of that going to the Sheriff's Department in the form of wages and benefits, and that's merely to cover the increase in our health insurance that we saw last year. We budgeted for it, but it was, it wasn't all spread into the different departments, so that's part of what we've done with that money. I think that's the main things I want to cover in Fund 20. The other small things were small adjustments to also benefits in animal control, building department, each in the amount of $5,000. And there was a small increase in our fire department contracts, $12,000. So those are the main changes in our Fund 20, municipal services fund. Fund 21 is our county RDA. There was an increase of $50,000. That was the money that we spoke about in a previous commission meeting that we sent to Price City to help with their repairs or upgrade of their sewer. That wasn't something that we discussed or decided on when we first approved our original budget, so that's something that's happened since then. And maybe, maybe just some more information. Hopefully, I'm not doing too much talking, but our Carbon County RDA, it's money increment that we receive from Ridge Road RDA, and there is a little over half a million sitting there in the RDA that's meant to be used for low-income housing and other repairs, and so it's allowable expenses for that money, and that money's really kind of considered restricted in that it's used for specific purposes, so it's been sitting there for a little while. So just some information on that. The, let's see, other things I wanted to cover just real quick is our Fund 28, which is our economic development. We've, we have a grant, it's our Brownfields Grant, and it's meant to help us identify and clean up any kind of property that maybe has issues with oil spills or environmental issues, so that that property can then be used or else sold. And we've done quite a few projects that have been very successful with that this year. But at the beginning of the year, we budgeted $60,000 in our Brownfield Grant expenditures. Again, it was, it was us getting into a project and kind of get a better feel of what that was going to take, but there's an increase of $250,000 in expenditures for the Brownfield Grant. Again, every bit of that will be covered by that grant. It's not going to be tax dollars, so anyways, just something we needed to include there. And then finally, we're not finally, there's two other things, sorry. Fund 54, County Airport, there's an increase of $180,000. That was for the expenses related to our snow removal equipment shed. That also is covered by a federal grant, something you guys could maybe hit on a little bit more if you'd like to, but again, it's a federal grant that's covering that new building that we decided kind of beginning of the year to construct. And then lastly, is our Fund 56, which is our building authority. This is where all of our buildings that we're constructing or whatnot is budgeted, and there's a $2.9 million increase to this fund, and that's all going towards our sub-district court remodel for the southeastern Utah Health Department, their new building there. It was required that the funds, the bonding that we received, that'd go through the county, so that's something that we had to show budget for. It's nothing out of our pocket necessarily because it was covered by bond proceeds that the Health Department will pay back, nothing that will pay out of ours. But again, like I said, for us to submit to the CIB, it was necessary that it be under the county's name, therefore, we had to show it in our budget. So that's all I had, if you have any questions.
I don't really have any questions. I do have a comment, though, on the Brownfield. It's kind of been our disposition that there's, if there's county property available, I think we should sell it. And with, as Todd said earlier, with all the building permits that are coming in this way, we do have interests for folks that, or from folks that are looking to build in this area, looking to expand, and some of the parcel asks have been pretty good acreage. So the commission has taken it upon themselves to look at what properties can be cleaned up and sold and possibly developed into new businesses in this area. Some local people have asked for that as well. So I think that's money well spent, and definitely could be paid back multiple times of what it's worth, so. Casey, did you have anything? Commissioner Hope, sorry, I keep calling you Casey.
No, I don't have anything.
I have nothing more.
Okay.
So we need public comments.
Yeah, is there anybody here that would like to make comment on any of the budget items that we've talked about? Feel free to walk up to the mic and state your name. Looks like there is not. And we haven't received any public comment, or nothing mailed in, or?
No, we haven't. And just to note, to my knowledge, nobody's come in to look at the budget amendments in our office, so.
There's no other comment than, I suppose, do we come out of public, we haven't come out of public hearing yet.
Yeah, yeah, so we need a motion to come out of the public hearing.
So I'll make the motion that we come out of the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now out of the public hearing, and we will go to item number 10. Consideration and possible approval to amend the 2021 budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended 2021 budget.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, item number 11 is adjourn as the Carbon County Commission and convene as the Carbon County Redevelopment Agency.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn as the Carbon County Commission and convene as the Carbon County Redevelopment Agency.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's going on here? Okay, so we'll go to item number 12, which is public hearing, public hearing on proposed East Ridge Road Community Reinvestment Project Area Plan.
Hi. Me again.
Do you want to make a motion to go into?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
A motion to go into public hearing?
Yeah, I'll make the motion we go into the public hearing.
I was going to explain, and then, either way.
We can go in.
Let's go in. I make the motion we go into the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in a public hearing. Rita, would you?
Yeah, I was just going to add, so I'm Rita, Carbon County Economic Development and Tourism Director, and we, I was listed on the notice sent out to property owners to contact for public comment, and so I received a call from one of the property owners listed on the map and in the plan and as one of the notices given out. So you guys all had a copy of the project area plan with this map in it. I received this map, and our GIS department created it for us, and I didn't realize that there was an error on one of the properties that was listed. It's actually a parcel number from Schofield and not from that one. So I wanted to let you know that one of the, that one of the public comments was that that parcel needs to be changed to 2A-1656-017F, as in Frank, which is the United States of America, and we did send a notice out to that property owner because they own multiple parcels. But as a matter of public record, I wanted to let you know that the Birch Creek Partnership that was listed on all of the notices was actually a typo, and it needs to be replaced with the other parcel number, so. And then, did you guys want me to explain anything about this? Okay, so this is a public hearing that we are, we've, are taking comment for a project area plan that we want to have approved to create a new project area on a portion of Ridge Road. What this project area would do is it would allow the county to approach other taxing entities and go to, enter into an interlocal agreement to either capture part of any new taxes, or so any, any new increment, any new value to any of these properties, they are able to cap, each taxing entity, we can capture part of the new tax increment. So 100% of the tax increment today will stay with all of the taxing entities. It won't increase, it doesn't increase property taxes, it just allows for any new increment for a portion of that to be captured, to save for upgrades to infrastructure or to provide as incentive for development in that area. So unless a property owner adds to their property value, we wouldn't capture any of the property tax, but if there was a development there, the county would be able to capture if the other taxing entities agreed to it, but this just opens up that option. The other part is if somebody comes in and wants to do a development, we are able to offer an incentive if we enter into an interlocal agreement with the other taxing entities to provide a rebate on some of the money a developer would spend on infrastructure they put into that area, qualified expenses like water, sewer, roads, and that type of public infrastructure. So this project, we've done a project area in this area before, there's already one in place on the west side of Ridge Road, and to the east near Price River Terminal. This middle portion, part of it is in Wellington, and then we added some around the county so that we can complete that area and provide a project area along all of Ridge Road, so we don't have that gap in the middle for that. So clear as mud?
There's a lot going on there.
Yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to provide that one public comment that I received. I did receive other inquiries about it from different property owners and different people who read the notice in the paper, answered some of their questions, let them know when the public hearing was, so, but this was the only one that actually had a change to what we had listed on here, so I just wanted to make sure that made the record. Thank you.
If there's anybody else that would like to make comment, just step up to the mic and if you would, state your name, and we'll have that on the record.
I'm David Jensen. I own some property out there, and I just wanted to, for my own benefit, clear up something about the taxable changes that are made out there, what identifies, what constitutes a taxable change. I mean, dirtwork or putting up a fence, what is it that changes it to taxable?
I think, Dave, the only thing that would change the value is if some structure building or a facility was built that would increase the value to a new level. The amount of tax that could be given back to, let's say you built a building out there and you had entered into an agreement with us in this area that's been identified, when you pay your taxes at the end of the year, on the new value of the building or facility you built, part of the money could be given back to you from whatever taxing entity is willing to enter into the agreement, the school district, Price River Water Improvement District, the county, and some of that money could come back to you to help with your, the money you've spent for infrastructure, for roads, for water, sewer, power, gas. So it's a, it's a way that we can offer a little bit of an incentive to someone who will come in and build something new. But you own the property today, and there's nothing on it, so the tax value of the property doesn't change unless the assessor's office adjusts that based on sale of raw ground out along Ridge Road. As properties are sold, if the property values, or if the property is sold for a higher value, then the assessor's office has to take that in consideration of what the raw land is worth. So you might see it bump up a little, especially now as the values of homes and everything have gone way up compared to what they were in years past.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is because I would like to make it a little more, you know, maybe do a little groundwork and just make it, you know, a little more, not such an eyesore to people. So is it safe to say that anything that requires a building permit would be what changes it?
We may have to ask the assessor exactly. Seth, would you know on that?
So just so I have your question clear, you're wondering what things you might do to your property that might increase the value of the property or the assessed value of the property?
Yeah, I want, I want to, you know, I want to go out there. It's on a slope, so I want to kind of level it off a little bit.
Yeah, I think generally speaking, something like that isn't going to change the value of the property in the assessor's office. Generally speaking, I don't think anything like that's, as Larry said, it's generally any kind of improvements, buildings or the like.
Okay, that's my question, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Anybody else like to make comment? And again, if you would, just state your name for the record.
My name is Charles Reynolds. I represent Relco Inc., and I mainly also looking for a little bit of clarification. I actually spoke with Rita on the phone about some of the things. I just wanted to clarify and confirm, in the case of our property, we are a centrally assessed property, and I just want to confirm that even if we do additional improvements that are including the central assessment, those, that money would still be available within the planning. Would that be correct?
The centrally assessed, that one's a little different. Do we know Rita? She's taking notes. We know how the centrally assessed would be affected by that? We know how the centrally assessed would be affected by that as opposed to the locally assessed?
So, from when I, when I spoke with, I just dribbled.
Charles?
Yes, I, my understanding was if, if we created this project area, would that take the capabilities of you being centrally assessed away? Is that what your question was, or?
He's wondering if, if it's still available to him because he's centrally assessed and not locally assessed. He's wondering if the benefits of the CRA are still them, there for them.
If they built new, added to the value of the property.
So, I will have to follow up on that one. I misunderstood the question when you called me, so I apologize for that. But, so you want to know if you would qualify for an incentive if you wanted to add something to your property? Okay, I apologize. I will find that out, but let me dig a little bit here. It's a new question for me, but if you have any other questions, I'm going to see if I can phone a friend and I'll get back with you.
I'm going to take a jump at it. I'm, I'm not 100% sure either, but I, I think that you are. I think that, I mean, being centrally assessed just means that your property is assessed by the state instead of by the county. It doesn't necessarily make you not able to participate in the CRA because you're centrally assessed rather than locally assessed. I, I think you're just fine like any other property owner out there. That's just, that's just kind of a, my feeling on it though.
As long as he's in that assessed, or that approved area?
Yeah, as long as the parcel's included, yeah.
I, I would agree. I think that's going to be accurate. Because if, if, if a new business came in, whether they would eventually be centrally assessed or assessed by the county, we would offer these to them.
Okay, and then the other question is it would appear, based on if the funding is available to put back into it, that there wouldn't be funding unless improvements are first made?
Correct.
And I'm just wondering if the county has any other incentives outside of this redevelopment that might be available to aid in, in developing and adding infrastructure along Ridge Road?
I think there's things we can talk to the economic development with. Internally, we are looking at doing some improvements basically on Ridge Road, but not on any specific parcel, obviously not your parcel. But there are things that we could possibly talk about that there may be some help or assistance there.
If you don't mind me asking, is there like a specific thing you're, you're, is it infrastructure that you're looking for help with? Is that, just so we're clear?
Yes, we're actually interested in possible, and it was, I actually spoke with the economic development a year or so ago. But Relco is interested if the opportunity, opportunity comes up for Carbon County to participate as, say, to be able to be involved in inland port facilities and things for exporting. Relco would be interested in possibly expanding facilities to load more than just coal or whatever might contribute to that and hope to be a part of that.
Do we want to talk about inland ports or?
Well, yeah, you know, there, we, we would, there's nothing specific right now with, in regards to the inland port, but we are currently doing, and we, we talked with you about a sewer alignment. And we have engineers working right now on the engineering for a sewer line that would extend clear up in that whole area. And so, that would be a big plus. The sewer line's a long ways away. It's a very large project. We turned an application in today to the state of Utah for some matching funds to help with that project. And so, we're hoping that if they, if they can help with some grant money, that that project probably will happen within a year. So, that would be one benefit to you. But I think as, as we move forward, there needs to be industry that has something they're going to do here, either assemble or make or have parts shipped from overseas here that they assemble and then distribute and sell here in the United States. Or things that some company may want to export, they would probably locate somewhere out there, potentially even on your property, to where those items could be put in the containers and shipped on rail to the coast and put on a, a boat to go overseas. Or the opposite could happen where those things could come here. So there, you know, that, because you own property there and you have a rail spur, you're in a good spot, but it would require probably a partnership with private industry to kind of make that begin to happen. The county's role in that, really, we're just trying to move it along. But as far as having dollars to build something other than this sewer line, our role probably is more of just trying to support industry that wants to come here and try to match partners up and landowners who own property out there.
Okay.
So you're, you're, you're in the loop. It's quiet right now because there's, the, the big thing is they're trying to figure out the inland port authority, the, the employees are trying to figure out what it is that's shipped through here right now. What's headed to the coast, what's coming from the coast back this way? And is there items being shipped that would be more reasonable to put on a train here and send it to the coast? Or something that right now is landing in, in the, in California and having to be loaded onto trucks to be moved away? That seems to be a big bottleneck right now and will get worse. The predictions are it'll get worse there, so they've got to come up with another way of moving those containers. So we're hopeful that something will open up.
Okay, I think that answers a lot of my questions, so, thank you.
Thanks, Charles.
If I can add one thing to both gentlemen that spoke. It, it's, it's easier to make your agreements with the county and the other taxing entities before the project starts. It's, it's much harder to get those in place after the project, after you've started a, a project. So if you have a project, come meet with the county and the other taxing entity. Start with the county and we'll, we'll start the agreements. But make sure those are done prior to any construction. It's just a lot easier to get the taxing entities on board prior to any construction happening.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Charles.
Anybody else? Looks like we have none. I didn't state the time either when we started. Kind of new at this, sorry. Okay.
I'll make the motion we come out of the public hearing at 5:28.
I'll second that.
Motion is in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number 13, we will adjourn as the Carbon County Redevelopment Agency and convene as the Carbon County Commission.
I'm sorry, do you want to point out that you're not going to make a decision, not going to approve it until the next, until that special meeting?
We want to do what now?
So, this was a public hearing, but you weren't going to do a motion to approve that project area plan today, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Would you like us to state that or, for the record?
I didn't know if we needed to or not, but.
Do we need to wait till our next public hearing to do it?
Yes, we can't. We, we have to wait until after that one to do it. So just so that the folks here are aware that I can get back with you, get your guys' contact information and get those answers for them. And then, they won't be approved until after the next public hearing.
Yes, we have a public hearing on Monday of next week for the same thing.
Yeah, so we will not be making any decisions tonight. So, that makes it a little easier for everybody? Okay, thank you, Rita.
I'll make a motion to adjourn as the Carbon County Redevelopment Agency and convene as the Carbon County Commission.
I second that.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number 14 is consideration and possible approval of the fiscal year 2022 State Assessment Forfeiture Grant. Is this one that, Lynn, is this on your, your plate?
This is a grant that provides for body cameras and other assets. And it was, the total grant amount is $20,000. And it's from the state of Utah, Commission on Criminal Justice.
Yes, Sheriff, did you want to, is that microphone on?
I think it's on. Was it on?
How about now?
Now it's on.
So yeah, this is a grant that Sergeant Adley sought out for body cams for the sheriff's office. We currently don't have enough body cams. Each officer's issued a body cam, so they have, they have to rotate them out throughout the shifts. And believe it or not, law enforcement officers are hard on equipment. So if we have any that are broken, then we're, we're down body cams. So this will give us enough that we'll have new body cams for both shifts of our patrol guys, and they're better technology so they download better, do better video and all that.
Great, great. No questions? Casey, Commissioner Hopes?
I don't have, I don't have any questions. I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 State Assessment Forfeiture Grant.
I'll second that.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Item number 15, determination and disposition of certain abandoned property held by the sheriff's office. Sheriff Wood, would you like to?
There is, there's a pile of stuff that's over in the Emergency Management Intake Building. And it's, it's stuff that was seized with a stolen vehicle that had a multi-jurisdictional case. And we've exhausted all avenues of trying to figure out who belongs to the property. We've given a lot of the property back to people that have claimed it, but this stuff, we're having a hard time figuring out who it belongs to. So it's what we would like to do is, is dispose of it. Either integrate it into our departments as tools that we need or, or get rid of it by other means, but we've stored it for quite some time.
That's what I was going to ask, is how long have you had this?
It's, it's been about a year and a half, I want to say. So it's been a while.
Lynn, do you have any concern or comment with this?
We need to designate a public interest use for the property, but possibly putting it back into our own uses, that's a public interest. So I think that should be fine, and we need to get rid of it. So I think this would be a good move.
Sheriff, if there are items that you don't want to use, would, would you propose trying to sell them or?
That's what I would recommend, if we could just kind of surplus them out as items that we don't need, if, if that's an option.
Yes, that's an option, to sell them. If you approve it. I mean, that's what you have to approve.
So I guess the question is, normally we have Don Johnston put these on the public surplus web auction site?
Yeah.
That's one way of disposing.
That's usually how we do it, yeah.
Are there any other thoughts of how to get rid of it? That, that works though. Items would have to have a little value to them or I don't think anybody would go to the bother of bidding on them.
Could we open a kiosk downstairs and sell those right outside your office?
I, I looked at some of the stuff when I was over there a while ago and I think some of it needs to go in the garbage.
Yeah, it's pretty rough, so.
There's no value to it.
So, I guess we'll entertain a motion of how we want to proceed with these goods.
I'll make the motion that we authorize these abandoned properties to be sold on the public auction or to be absorbed into the sheriff or any of the other departments of the county.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item 16 is review and possible approval of the amendment of the cooperation agreement between Carbon County, East Carbon City, Helper City, Price City, Wellington City, and the Department of Public Safety Communications Bureau for Dispatch Services.
Commissioners, if you're okay with it, I'll take this for just a second. This, this is our annual agreement with Dispatch to provide dispatch services for, it's for not only us, but all of the cities. There, there is an increase as there, as there normally is. There are wages and, and other things that, and benefits that are, have increased in the dispatch. Dispatch is, is run by the state, at least our dispatch center is. There's different types of dispatch centers throughout the state. Emery has their own and they run their own dispatch services, but we're linked in. Regionally, Highway Patrol operates out of our dispatch center as well as all the cities in the, in the county.
And Commissioner Hopes, as you say, this is run by the state, so when any kind of increase or change comes from the state, we don't have much say to that, correct?
The only say that we would have would be to open up our own dispatch center. And, and I don't know when it would be cheaper for us to do that. We've looked at that option in the, in the past and I don't think we're quite there yet. However, if it keeps going up, there may be that option in the future.
Okay.
I have no questions or comments.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the cooperative agreement between the counties and the city and the Utah Department of Public Safety for communication, for dispatch services.
I second that.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 17 is the ratification of an Indigent Defense Commission Fiscal Year 22 grant to reimburse the county for payments of court-tracking administrative assistance and agreement with admin assistant. Is this? Lynn, is this one?
Sure, the Indigent Defense Commission has provided money to pay for an administrative assistant to help with the tracking of the public defender cases. And they're paying, I think, $5,000 a month for this information. There's a lot of reports that are required and a lot of tracking that will be required for the administrative assistant to do. So it's money that the public defenders will be using for their assistant.
So currently, Robert Oliver is the administrator of, of the Indigent Defense Grant. And then he, this, this money would pay for an assistant to work in his office as a, I think it's a subcontractor. It might be for him personally, but I think it's a subcontractor. She's subcontracting for this, to provide those services.
Yeah, she'll be an independent contractor, not an employee.
Correct.
Okay.
No questions.
Okay, if there's no further comment or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we ratify the Indigent Defense Commission Fiscal Year 2022 grant to reimburse county for payment of court-tracking administrative assistant and agreement with the administrative assistant.
I think that was a second. All in, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.